This meeting of the trustees of the Lamisa Independent School District is now in order. It is 6:00 PM, October 17th, 2024. A forum is present with all board members present. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in the court of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Mr. Ritchie, would you please be with us there?
Would you please bow with me? Dear Lord, just thank you for all of the support that's in this room tonight. All of the students, all of the staff, all of the parents, the siblings. It's just, it's amazing to see all of these great young men and women that represent Lamisa ISD and the Lamisa community get to be presented and get to be honored. And we get to show them off to the world because they deserve to be shown. Just bless everyone on their way home. Let it be a positive night and a safe night. And just thank you for everything you do for us, in your name we pray. Okay, we've got a lot of parents' student recognition. A lot of this is also for the principal reports, but we're gonna do it all now. That way, parents, you can, you don't have to stay through a lot of mornings. But I do wanna start with the original one that I asked to come prior to visiting with Ms. Baker about getting the CTE. So could I have Coach McCall and Rico come up here real quick? Can you move my slideshow along? So, cross-country. Raise your hand if you ever ran cross-country. So, why do I have Rico and Coach McCall here? And I'm gonna let them talk a little bit because I say it a lot. It's one of those things that goes completely unnoticed. I work out every morning and I know that they're working out at 6:00 AM because I see them in the dark running. And I worked with Coach McCall when I was a coach here and I know how hard she works. Well, at district, we haven't fared greatly the last few years. And last, you gotta get in the top 10 at district to keep running. And last week, when he passed me the first time, so it's a three-mile course that he has to run, he was sitting in 10th place. And I'm not gonna lie to you, Rico. When he passed me, my thought was, 'cause we talked, 'cause Vanessa was there too. Man, I hope the next time he passes, which will be one more mile, he's still in the hunt. And when he passed me the next time, he was in the ninth place. At which point, I told her, hey, he's gonna make it. And he finished, got 10th, qualified for regional. He works as Teloff as does Coach, but he's also a great young man. He's also presented with the CTE stuff earlier today. But I wanted Coach to talk about it. If you have anything to say, I would like you to talk about it. And I also want to compliment Coach McCall. She's been at it for a while, but she still goes as hard as any young coach we got. The young coaches can learn something from how hard you work, Coach McCall. So I thank you and I love you to death. So just go ahead and talk a little bit.
That's true, I said, "Love Rico." Rico has worked the last three years honing his skills. And cross-country is not easy. If you don't believe us, come to May Simmons next Thursday, next Tuesday, 11:00 AM. He's gonna be running. Since last year, he's cut his time over a minute on the May Simmons course, which is very significant. I'm very, very pleased to introduce him because he is a quality young man and he represents our school and our community in such a positive way. And, you know, we have lots and lots of good kids at Lamisa High School, but he's one of the best.
I don't know much to say other than that I'm very happy that I've been able to train with Coach every morning at 6:00 AM. Happy to work me to death.
All right, congratulations and good luck next week. All right, now I'm gonna fast forward and then we'll rewind. But our principal reports. Our principals usually come give a little information. And last week or last month, we did some stuff over at TAC. And even though Jasper and Gensler got to talk, Mr. Tipton and Ms. Griffin had the bulk of it. And so tonight, Ms. Jasper, Coach Gensler, you took the easy way out. You're not gonna have to talk much, Ms. Baker and her people. But I do wanna compliment first. We had a, and I'll let Ms. Felchak talk about it. We had a fall leadership, what would you call it today? What was the official name of what we did this morning?
Um, CTAT Career Technical Association of Texas.
And 17 schools, 17 representatives from schools came and toured our facilities and got to know our kids and got to know our staff. And I'm always proud of our kids and our staff, but when you get to watch other people realize how amazing Lamisa is, it just sends chills up your spine. And that's how the morning was. And I want to compliment Ms. Felchak for doing the work. The custodians and Albert got that thing looking as good as it's looked in a long time. So thank you to those. We fed them pizza yesterday, we're gonna feed them again tomorrow. We've got a lot of the CTE people here and I'm not real sure, Ms. Baker, you gonna come or are you gonna actually make Gensler talk a little bit? I'd really like to start and work our way up. And if you wanna kinda introduce what we're about to do, we've got representatives from eighth grade all the way up. And I've told them all two to three minutes, so we're not here for the next hour and a half. But I also want y'all to really appreciate, we got amazing things happening. And I want y'all to get to appreciate it and see it for yourself. So with that, I'll turn it over to y'all.
All right. Good evening. Time's flying, seems like just yesterday we were here talking about that. Now we're here talking about CTE. So like Ms. Ritchie said, we had that CTAT tour today, that Career and Technical Association of Texas that Ms. Telchak organized. And it was, you know, since I've gotten here, like the first time I stepped foot on my interview, I was impressed. I told you guys that, I was impressed by the facilities here. And I've always said that that CTE wing is, I feel, in my opinion, is kinda like the crown jewel of our school. Like if I was gonna take something to a tour, hey, let's go check out the CTE. Because I've been to a lot of 3A schools and I've never seen a wing that's impressive as that is. And so it was a good event today. I mean, we had kids demonstrating law enforcement, the Cosmo. I mean, it was culinary and construction welding and everything. The van put on a show for us. It was, it was, it was quite an event. And it was just, it was a great opportunity to kinda showcase what we have and what we have going for our kids. And to me, I think we're really blessed to have that. So we brought, I have Ms. Baker, she's about to come up. And we have a bunch of kids and teachers here to talk a little bit about our CTE programs.
I just wanted to kinda go over some of the information on this flyer that I did not create. I'm not going to give myself credit, this was Frankie's doing. But I just kind of gave the numbers of students in each program. The total of CTE students that we do have are 243. Now, our total enrollment at high school is 465. So some of you may question, well, why are only half of those students enrolled in CTE courses? A lot of those students have already finished their career technical pathway. So we have 146 seniors and I'm gonna say a lot of those have already finished their program. So they once were a CTE student, but they are not this year, they've already completed it. Some of our programs like culinary, that is a two-year program, construction, welding, those are three-year programs. So not every program requires all four years. Certificates we currently offer are the AWS D91 sheet metal welding, certified nurse aide, phlebotomy technician, and cosmetology operator license. Last year was the first year that we did test for cosmetology. We had a couple of kids pass. We did not have anybody, or sorry, we had a couple of kids test. We did not have anybody pass yet. We had two girls that were like two questions away. But again, that was the first year that they've actually taken the test. So it's a little trial and error, trying to figure out what is gonna be on that state exam. But we can test those students at high school, so they do not have to go to a testing site. Future plans, this is actually for this year. Doris class, the law enforcement, they're gonna offer the JED Emergency Telecommunicator Certificate. So it's the 911 dispatch. They're gonna be working with the police department. We're gonna have an educational aid level one for education and training students and serve safe manager. That, it's not a food handler certificate. It's a little bit more complexed. All of Kevin's kids have to have that food handlers before they can even start handling food. So the serve safe, that is the next level. He's wanting to actually offer two more certificates on top of that. So we're, we're doing really good things at the high school. You tend to kind of forget how much you are doing on the day-to-day. But today was a big eye-opener for me because sometimes I don't feel very confident. Maybe I don't know everything I need to know, and I don't, we're all human. But after today, I really felt like, you know what? We're doing a lot of really good things and especially for the size of our school. And our kids did a phenomenal job presenting today. We want you guys to come, to come do what those people did today and tour and just see the different kids present, see the facilities. I know you've seen the facilities, but in you. It was just a really good experience all around. I'm gonna introduce our different programs and kids and let them kinda speak to you for a second.
Can, like, what Ms. Baker's saying, like, we had, we had representatives from like Abilene, from Midland Greenwood, some bigger schools that were looking at our facilities at 3A level. And like I said, like, just at our level to have what we have and that bigger schools are coming to look at it, it's a sight to be seen and they're really impressed by it.
They were. Lisa, you wanna bring your kiddos out?
Okay, I brought three with me and this is the second year that I've had these and they're in the design. They took them last year and then they're taking advanced graphic. I have Jesse Hernandez, Rico Enricus, and Ruben Hernandez, and they're gonna talk about the projects.
Well, I didn't really, glasses effect. How I do, set up my layers, isolate heat color channel by layers, adjust the perspective by layers, and I move the layers to make it have that heat effect. And I crop final image to remove the color and that's pretty much it.
Can I leave a motto?
Do I?
Can I leave a motto?
Yes, sir. Everything you see, that's it.
Hello, my name is Rico Enricus and I'm gonna be speaking for drones. Ms. Telchak has had us learning how to fly drones in like the past like three months lately. And we've learned how to fly with them, like race against them on the football field lately. This one is a multi-rotor drone. And here's a camera right there. But anyways, we haven't really learned much with them yet. But, um... Can you take a photo with you?
Am I the only one that wants you to fly that?
I thought you were gonna fly it.
I'm willing to sign waivers, fam.
I'll let you fly it though.
Don't.
But yeah, that's really all I have to say. I mean, we've learned how to fly them in the CTE building as well as like on the football field. We've learned how to do that also with Photoshop, like we, like earlier, and also with Adobe Audition. But that's, that's all I have to say.
Good job, guys.
I'm Jesse Hernandez and I'm presenting Adobe Audition. We use Adobe Audition to make different sounds and music clips for our assignments. I made a small little example to show y'all. But it could be used for music, for, for movies, just to add clips together from the library they have. I just added the sound clips they have from all of their library. But you can use that to make movies, to make songs, to present anything that has audio in it.
Good job, Jesse.
Okay, I'm also gonna pick on one of my seniors, Haley. She was just accepted this week to TAC and she also got the Presidential Scholarship.
Congratulations.
Coach Dodderline, did you wanna bring your kiddos out?
You better believe it.
Haley and Jordan. And he's representing Ag and his advanced play.
Yes, so this year, I'm doing FFA, doing Ag side. I did tell them I can't do a whole lot with animals, 'cause that's baseball season and... So we got a lot of confidence, but I'll get them prepared for everything. And if there's conflicts where I can't be there, we got backup to take them to all the contests. Saturday, we have our first contest down in Abilene. And Jordan's been through the program last year, she's sophomore. So I'm gonna let her speak a little bit about what we're gonna be doing and how's it gonna go.
Okay, so our first competition is in Abilene. And five of us are competing. One is competing in Spanish creed. Two of us are competing in Greenhand creed. One of us in the regular creed and I'm competing in job interview. Four of us are competing in Ag advocacy and we picked the topic, vertical farming. Vertical farming is a type of farming that does not use soil. You use just water. Vertical farming, you can stack it, it's not on land at all. It's just, we're, we're trying to be advocates for, for not having so much land 'cause we're losing land every single day with buildings being built and natural disasters and whatnot. We have to learn how to farm this way instead of this way, if that makes sense. Anyways, that's what we're doing at our contest on Saturday.
Well, good luck and go get it. Good job, Jordan.
And we're gearing towards meta, that's, that's the district. All these are scrimmage games. So I told them, I don't care how good we do, we're just gonna keep improving and we're gonna beat that district and get on to the next step. I got KK here to talk about the plant soil science part that we have. And thank you for every, all the support. I know it's new, this program, and I am enjoying the devil out of it. I'm having the kids do a lot of research that I'm interested in, but they're getting to do the work. And then I get a look at the data and see what's working, what's not working. But KK went through the program last year. So she's got to see the whole picture rather than some of the kids that have only been here nine weeks right now. So I brought KK here to talk about the plant soil science side.
Okay, so in our plant soil science class, we have hydroponics and aquaponics. And Coach Dodderline actually has a pond inside of his classroom with the fish. And the fish fertilize the plants and the plants provide air for the fish. It's really cool. We also, when I, when we, last year when we started, we started with, was it aquaponics?
Hydroponics.
Hydroponics. When we had them, we're there in little buckets and the bubbles, there's a little green rod and it created bubbles. And that's what made our plants grow. Don't ask me how it works, I could say that. But at the end of the year, I took everything home and I replanted everything that I grew and I actually grew a garden, so I'm gonna show this picture for you. It was a really fun experience and I got something out of it. It's tomato, okra, banana peppers, watermelon, cantaloupe.
Girl, and they all grow in the shop.
That was thriving.
That is awesome. And it's still up to date, so.
That's good.
Okay, guys.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, wow.
Take a picture of that.
Yeah, it's super cool and it's a fun experience and you also get something.
Where's that, that's why I go rate it. So where's that, where's that garden, that's why I go rate it?
Get samples or something.
I actually pickled my banana peppers and my okra.
Oh, good.
Good job.
So each year as we go along, I try to do different things. And so this year, and where I'm building it is, my goal is to get a soil sample from Everett County in the state of Texas. There's 254 of them. I got about 16 counties right now. So as we're doing research on the soil side, KK's group got to do three counties. The one where I got my cows over in Wood, Jones, and then Dawson County. But now each kid is using soil from a different county and doing the research so we can compare the clays to the silts, to the sands. And so it gives everybody a different answer at the end of the day when, as we're doing that. And so they're gonna start growing in these soils, plants, and hopefully they're accessible and take to it like KK did. But that's, that's where we're at and we're ready to get the greenhouse totally up and going. Still in that process and then we're gonna grow all kinds of plants.
Also, one more thing, it's called chicken flu culture.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Coach.
My scholarship and my application to type would not have been accepted if it wasn't for Ms. Telchak and Ms. Hernandez. So their word does not go unnoticed.
Ms. Reese, you wanna come up with your kiddo? JJ?
JJ, JJ Morales and Kira Chavira. Chavira. Okay, my name's Ms. Reese. I teach the CNA and phlebotomy courses at the high school. They are dual-credit. These two guys right here did my CNA class last year and they are both certified nursing assistants today. They have great opportunities, you know? CNA certification is, I tell my students, is a key to get you into so many other things, you know? And I just can't wait to see what these guys do. And one of these days, I tell my students this all the time, is we're not gonna be, you know, instructor, teacher, we're gonna be colleagues. 'Cause I'm still out there and I help the hospital and the doctors and whoever else. And I hope to be working right alongside these guys one of these days, okay? The CNA, we are getting better every year. Last year, I believe I took 18 and we graduated half of them, okay? So we did, no, I took 19. And we did eight and the eight that did not pass the first round, passed either one part of their test or their second part of test. There's a clinical side and there's a written test side. And they either pass one or the other. And when they don't do, they don't pass both, they get to go back and retest. And I'm taking those back in November to retest and hopefully we'll have 100% by the end of the year, okay? The phlebotomy course, both of these guys decided to take my phlebotomy course and they're doing a great job. It is very entailed and we haven't got into actually sticking anybody yet, but we're always looking for volunteers when we do. We're welcome to swing by, you know? And that's gonna happen within the next two weeks. We're gonna start practicing on the fake arms. We have dummy arms, they actually have blood in them. So when you poke them, you will get blood returning to the tubes. So, and you know, they're real lifelike. And we do about 100 sticks a kid for that before we start practicing on real people, okay? I didn't think about bringing anything to present or anything, but I know these guys know how, they can teach y'all something, right? Let's teach everybody in this room, right? Let's teach everybody in this room how to check their own radio pulse, which is on your thumb side, right, right here, right? Remember? Right? Okay, so I'll let them instruct y'all.
All right, so we got these braces out the way. You're gonna, you're gonna wanna find a vein along your thumb side. And I usually go with two fingers to more feel the pulse. And whenever you relax it, you'll tend to feel a little bump. And you can count that for about a minute. To get your, your beats for a minute, so if you wanna.
Everybody feel their own?
Oh, yeah.
Chris? And then in healthcare, like I tell my students, I wasn't for sure if I was gonna be able to teach them how to do their, you know, how to become a CNA, how to become a phlebotomist. But it, it just took me a couple of days to realize, hey, as a nurse myself I am, or in, that's my job. I teach, you know, patients, I teach families, I teach doctors, right, every now and then. So we're always educating and I hope these guys do as well. And thank y'all very much.
So are they able to work on regular, are they, is it kinda work?
Are they working, how many, do y'all have a job doing that?
Not right now.
Playing football right now, but you will.
It could be a weekend deal and actually, if you've been to the medical arts clinic, I have three of my previous students currently working over there. And I hear great things about them and it makes me proud.
That's awesome.
Good job, guys.
Ms. Martinez is not able to make it tonight. She's feeling under the weather and she has got competition tomorrow. But her kiddos are here and they're going to present. So can I get Bella, Savannah, Devin, and Anastasia?
I'm Savannah Rodeo, we're in law enforcement. I'm a sophomore and tomorrow we're competing at Love Up for Skills. I do the agility course, DWI traffic stop and building search. And today I did a presentation for my DWI. We did the walk and turn and one-leg stance. But there are three tests and there are the horizontal gaze and stagismus, then the walk and turn, and then your one-legged stand. And throughout those three tests, we'll have indicators whether or not we can arrest them for drinking while driving. But usually you'll get your intoxication with your indicators when you pull them over, whether or not they smell like alcohol or their eyes or slurs, speech, and other things.
Hi, my name is Isabel Grant. And tomorrow I'm competing in Love Up for building search and duty course. But there's also other events, spelling traffic stop, misdemeanor traffic stop, crime scene, and DWI.
Good afternoon, my name's Devin Russ. Now, this is my first year doing the competition, so I'm just gonna tell you about my experience so far. I'm doing the, I'm doing court opening statements. I'm going to be the prosecution. So far, that's been pretty fun. It's a case about a kid who got arrested at jail, I mean, not got arrested, got arrested at school, you know? All that, carrying a knife. I'm also doing the felony traffic stop. That's been pretty fun. I gotta sit inside of a police cruiser, hop out, give commands, learn my lines, pretty fun. And I'm also doing the building search. Get to check out the equipment, still obey my commands. Get to search the rooms, we have the bottom and top floor. We've searched the loft as well. So it's just going pretty good, that's all I wanna say.
Okay, so my name is Anastasia Contreras. And tomorrow we have our Love Up Invitational competition tomorrow. It's, it used to be like TXPSDA, but now we don't have that organization anymore. I will be participating in the closing statement. We are given a case and you're able to choose if whether you want to prosecute or defend. So I'm gonna be the defense attorney, you'll be the prosecutor. It's a pretty cool competition. It's mainly law enforcement, so we do have misdemeanor DWI, felony traffic, building search. We also have court cases like opening statement, closing statement. This Love Up Invitational is basically... This Lubbock Invitational is basically to prepare us for Skills USA. We have our skill competition in February. But for right now, for our Lubbock Invitationals, these kids standing behind me, they have been working really, really hard. We have practices on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays. Our SROs have been helping us a lot with felony traffic, misdemeanor, DWI. So they really have been helping us work hard. We will have our competition tomorrow, so hopefully we do well.
Good luck.
I'm trying to loop because last time I missed somebody. But I think, I think Isaiah's the only one that's showed up today. Do you have the numbers on certifications?
Yes, and I forgot to mention that earlier. Last year, we certified sixty-one students. Now, some of them have multiple certifications. So you may have somebody who earned a phlebotomy or a CNA certificate as well as a phlebotomy. Some of his welding kids earned two certificates. So we had about, out of the sixty-one certified, we had about forty-five certified in welding. So it's, it's a really big, successful program.
So when you get certified, are they work-ready to go out and work, or?
Yes, they can. Yes, they can. Okay, good. Some, some different certifications require different things. And no, if you don't get a pipe welding certification, they're gonna test you there. But that, taking that test in itself is a big deal, just being ready to take that test. It's good. It takes a lot of practice. Isaiah's got his D nine-one sheet metal code welding, and he's gonna get a D one-one this year. And he's gonna be one of my skills kids as well. Do you wanna speak to that?
Not really. But it's my first time doing skills, so I feel like it'll be fun to go out there, hopefully win.
I'll get you. Our, the competition that we're doing, and he can show you a picture. They're gonna build a fire pit. So what that competition is, is you build it here at Lumisa and take a job book to district. And you just present your job book, and if that does well enough, and he, and his team can go to state, then we'll take the project to state. So there's two teams I've got right now. One team's building that fire pit, and another's building a fountain. It's a big fountain that has water running all down.
So what do y'all do with, what do y'all do with these projects? Do y'all raffle them off, oxen off? Are they built for someone, or how do y'all?
Right now, they're unspoken for, so my plan was to sell them.
We've got a mixture of projects slash things they just make that we sell to keep raising money for the program. But we do, we've had more and more people start to reach out to us to build stuff, and we're trying to make that more of a thing we do.
Right, so we build stuff in class, just little projects, little stuff. And then we work on stuff that people bring in every now and then, repair things. And then stuff like that, I plan on selling it. If we could kind of personalize it to Lumisa, I'm sure it would do well, and it goes back to the activity fund to go do stuff.
Sold.
And I'm gonna ask our Cosmo girls to come up. Naveya and Kami. Ms. Napper did not make it back from Lubbock from a doctor's appointment, so she asked that I would stand up here with the girls. Are you a junior or a sophomore?
I'm a sophomore.
Okay, sophomore. Kami's a junior. This year was the first year that we opened Cosmo up to sophomores. But since we moved Spanish down to the middle school, and some kids can earn their fine art credit in middle school based on their artistic abilities, some kids' schedules have opened up to where they can take the two-class period Cosmo class. So Naveya is one of our sophomores who's able to do that. I think we have maybe about seven or eight of those kiddos. So that's a big accomplishment that she has room in her schedule. And then Kami, this is her first year as a junior to take Cosmo. And today, when we were doing the tour, I went in, I was, you know, asking them because some kids can take the whole course of Cosmo where it's the hair and the nails, which is a thousand hours. Some girls decide, okay, we just wanna do the nail side. So that takes less hours. And then they can just do the esthetician, which is facials. That's something that we started new this year. And then, of course, we have some of the guys that do barber. So she's got a lot going on in there, and she's got her little groups, but she does a wonderful job. And y'all wanna do the hair and the nails, correct? Okay, but y'all were doing nails when we're talking about it. Yeah, so always ask them, what's your preference? And usually what they're working, it's a preference. But I wanted them, those girls to be recognized. They're kinda shy, so I told them I would speak. All right, thank you. Do you have any more CTE kiddos?
Here.
Okay. Construction wasn't able to be here, or culinary. And Mr. Presley was planning to come, but he had to back out last minute. But those are our other programs. And we really do, we have a really successful CTE program at the high school. We're really blessed.
Okay, so high school kids and parents, y'all are gonna hang on because it does trickle down to our middle school. And they're going to tell us how that contributes to the CTE. And then we're gonna get a picture of all the kids before everybody leaves. Ms. Jasper?
Thank you for inviting us to share our kids too. And we have, our middle school, we have great kids. I tell y'all that all the time. And it's such a blessing to get to work with them every day. I love them all. Today, we did take a group of our eighth graders to the high school to present, and they presented on Avid. They did a phenomenal job. They were nervous and stuff, and then they came back, and they were excited but still nervous. And so we just, we had a good talk about the foundation that they're setting because this is gonna be part of the first cohort that starts our P-Tech program, which is huge, and we're so excited about it. And it's such an honor. And today, we talked about just having that privilege that they're creating history at Lumisa Middle School. And it's not history that's gonna be something that a one-and-done. It's history that's gonna last a lifetime, and their kids will hopefully benefit from that. And so they can tell their kids, when they go through the program, we were the, we were the foundation that helped get that program going. We are the first to benefit from it. And so it's gonna do a lot of amazing things. So I wanna invite Paloma Castillo up here, Fernanda Torres. I have Naomi.
She's not here.
She ain't show up. And then I have Jordan Liscano and Ally Perez. And I just want them to share their experience with you and how Avid is just really lighting the pathway for their future that they want, and how exciting that is.
Well, what is Avid? Well, first of all, let's explain what Avid is. Now, I don't know if y'all know, but Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. And it's just basically an organization dedicated to closing the opportunity gap and preparing students for college and career success from other representing groups. And that's kind of what Lumisa is. Because if you go to somewhere like Dallas and you say, hey, can you spot Lumisa on the map, or even just Dawson County in general? They're not gonna know where it's at. Because if you go to a big place like Dallas, and you think of a small place like Lumisa, we're kind of like the underdogs here. That's what the best thing about Avid is. We're able to have an amazing opportunity that a lot of kids can't really have. We're really blessed right now. Y'all wanna add on?
For me, Avid is just a great thing for us. It helps me focus on my classes. And like, for careers, I didn't know what I was gonna do. I was like, dang, like, what am I gonna do? Like, high school is just one year away from us. And you, we know how a year goes fast, so I was like, we have high school, we have a lot of stuff to do, but I have zero idea. But now I do barbie and all of that. I can't wait for high school then.
Good.
Good to have you.
Avid has helped a lot because last year, nobody knew how to take notes. And I'm gonna be honest, nobody really did. And now they're teaching us how to take proper notes. They're helping us with different classes. We have a binder, and it's divided with all of our classes, including Avid. And we keep everything organized in there with our notes. And we also use a planner. So planners help us really stay organized when something is coming up.
Good.
So we're about to start tutorials for Avid. So really, overall, Avid just helps you with every period in your whole school. It can help you with English, history, your notes, really whatever you need to either bring up your grade or help you in that class. Really whatever you need.
What do they use for the form?
Oh, so like, this thing called a TRF is a tutorial request form. And you fill it out, and like, a subject you need help in, or what you're confused in, whatever you need help with. And we'll get a student presenter to help you with whatever you need help with.
So the benefit of that is it's a lot of peer learning, you know? Peer teaching, peer learning. And so they're helping each other, and they actually create what's called an essential question for that learning. So do you wanna explain that to us?
First, essential, uh, my fault. Essential question is, like, what did we did in that classroom for science? Well, today I was in science, so I really, and math. But those are what we work on more. And then sometimes history, because a lot of us are struggling in history a little bit. So we find something that we learned, and write it down, and find, like, what is about, like, to remember, get our thoughts. Because how Carolyn said, it takes like twenty-four hours to forget what you learned. So we write it down, memorize it, and go over it sometimes.
You see, that's another thing with what Ms. Jasper said. She said it's a lot of student teaching. I really like how she said that, because a lot of us, we don't really understand the way a lot of teachers teach. Personally, I don't understand the way my math teacher teaches, and that's okay. But with the TRF, I'm actually able to understand the way, because Paloma might explain it a way that I don't understand. It's not teacher-led, it's student-led. And that's what's amazing about it. We're able to use words we understand that a lot of teachers might be mad at us for using whenever they don't mean nothing bad. It's just the way we taught, you know? For the younger generation, and it's time to pass it down. Sorry, guys. It's true. A lot of understand some ways.
Thank you, guys.
Amazing, right? And they really represent our program and what we're doing, and, you know? They didn't just represent the program well. They represented, like I said, our school and our district, our community, everything so well. And they're passionate. And I love seeing that drive in them, because imagine the things they're gonna do in the future.
I think you need to give her an application.
Next, I wanna invite Coach Hernandez up here. Like, Amy said, we brought Spanish to middle school. We've had Spanish in the past, this year. It's just taken a whole new life, and it's amazing. I love going into Coach Hernandez's classroom because y'all talk about a hundred percent engagement. We talked about that one, we talked about that. It's hard to get with classes because kids, you only have a certain amount of time span to catch their attention and hook them in, right? And if you don't get them hooked in, you lose them. She does an amazing job at hooking those kids every day. Every time I walk in there, there's a hundred percent engagement. I have never walked in and saw a kid off task or kind of like daydreaming, or, you know, just fiddle farting around. She creates an environment where the learning is happening, it's going on. Even your shy kids, you know, the other day she had them reading words in Spanish. And then she would ask them, what's the, you know, the female version? I'm probably not saying it right. And then they would say it, and then she would have them use it in a context. You know, like, how would you use it? Well, what if, you know, how would you say it this way? And they were really engaged, and I saw her, her kids that typically won't get up and really speak out. They were doing that. And then she creates just amazing activities. It's not just learning to speak. She's creating activities that are hands-on and very engaging. So they don't have a minute to lose in that class, and that's what we love to see when we go in. So she does a great job.
I wasn't sure if I was gonna be here, so I had wrote something down, but I'm probably not gonna read it all. But it's been a breath of fresh air to get back in the classroom. And it's, it's a different setting, setting that I've enjoyed a lot, but I have to credit the kids. You know, going from, I've heard so many horror stories of, oh, man, you're going to middle school. Are you sure you made the right choice? One hundred percent. The middle school, middle school kids have been a blessing, which makes it easy. Makes my job a lot easier. And this past week, we were focusing on adjectives and how to put them in a sentence, and how they agree with your nouns. And so what she was talking about was the masculine and feminine, and how they had to agree. So writing Wednesdays are our Wednesdays where we write. So we had writing Wednesday this past Wednesday, and we talked about how we're gonna have to write, and they're, you know, ugh. I was like, but you're gonna write in Spanish, because it's a Spanish class. And then it was like, oh, they did amazing. So I'm gonna, I invited four kids, and I'll introduce these four. These four, and again, they are exceptional students. There are a lot to choose from. But these four have worked really hard. They give day in and day out their best effort. They're the kids that other kids are like, hey, can you help me with this? And they're like, yeah. And they're helpful, they work hard, and they're actually going to read something that they wrote in Spanish. And so they were really nervous, but they practiced during tea time today, and they're a lot better than they give themselves credit for. So at this time, I'm gonna invite the girls first. So Asia Watson and Navey Lee Vara, if y'all will come out real quick. So this is Asia, and this is Navey Lee. Now, what they did, because yours, we created, we did some kind of rough draft and got our thoughts together. They ended up doing a poem about themselves. And then they wrote on the back about each other, and they kind of introduced who they are, who they're, what their friends are like. And I'm gonna have them read about each other. Y'all ready? And the good thing, and this is what, I want them to be comfortable. I want you, and I tell them all the time, I will make mistakes. We're gonna make mistakes together. But all I'm asking for, and they give a hundred percent. It's like, okay, if you want me to try it, I'm gonna try it. And again, couldn't ask for better students. Thank y'all. I have Alexander Harvard and Ryan Voskis.
Soy Alex. Normalmente soy desordenado y simpático. A veces soy reservado, talentoso o gracioso. No soy ni deportista ni serio. Yo soy yo.
Soy Ryan. Soy deportista y gracioso. A veces soy perisoso, trabajador o impaciente. No soy ni paciente ni artístico. Yo soy yo.
And what they, what they read was their, their poem that they wrote about themselves. So again, just using their adjectives, making sure that they agree with the masculine form. And so we've been kind of using what we're learning to write, to speak, and hopefully that they're a little more confident going out in the real world with Spanish.
Great job.
And then, last but not least, I have Coach Garcia. And he has an amazing program. It is a CTE class that flows through the high school, and it's audio and visual arts technology. And I think Ms. Garcia has found his niche. I really do. He, he is so into it and excited, and that filters over to the kids. It just trickles down. And so his class, it's a highly requested class. This year, we had to tell some kids we didn't have room for the class. And that, it was sad for me, but, you know, it's an honor for him because they all wanna go in there. And it's a ton of learning, but it's learning that doesn't feel like learning because it's fun. And they're very hands-on in getting to experience things that's futuristic, and I think that's really cool. So please welcome Coach Hernandez.
Coach Garcia.
I mean, I'm sorry, Coach Garcia. I've been a long day, y'all. So this is Coach Garcia.
All right, well, I teach principal of arts, audio/video technology communications. The main goals of this course are just to identify the basic theory in audio/video production, graphic design, and fashion design. And it kind of just introduces them to this various career opportunities in this cluster. And I've got about three students. I've got DeeDee Hilber, Jordan Ortega, and Xavier Medina, if y'all wanna come up. And I'll kind of just go through what we've gone over, I guess, since the beginning of the school year. And I'll wrap it up.
Hi, my name's Jordan. At the beginning of the school year, we learned about different career clusters. They range from performing arts, visual arts, AV technology in film, journalism and broadcasting, print and photography, and telecommunications. We learned about the educational requirements for each of these career clusters and the jobs involved in each. and telecommunications. We learned about the educational requirements for each of these career clusters and the jobs involved in each.
Hi, my name is DeeDee Hilber. After learning about the different career clusters, we spent a few weeks going on professional communication. We explored different communication styles such as listening 101, professional communication, presentation strategies and tactics, and written communication practices. We wrote memos, emails and learned about the importance of communicating professionally.
We are currently exploring and learning about public and communi- commu- I'm sorry, community relations. We are seeing the importance of public relations and its impact on relaying information to the public, whether it is a press release, news release or newsletter.
Alrighty. So, um, last year I had a lot of students. I think my classes were like 31. I had 29 in another. And I also taught journalism last year, but this right here is what the kids love to do. Second semester, we're gonna get into video game design. And, uh, that's where we get into coding and they get to play games. And it looks like they're just coming in and just playing a game on iPads or whatever, but they're really just doing their own thing. So it, it's something that I love to do. Kids love to do it. And, you know, we're just running with it. So appreciate it. Great job.
These classes are so important because it, it is their pathway to their future. You know, they're just as equally as important as the core academics that we teach. And I really appreciate you guys for, for taking them on and, and I appreciate you kids because they work hard and they love it. And it's good. And so I'm probably not.
Alright, give yourself a hand. You want, I want you to come up here and get with the board. We're gonna get a picture of the board and all the students. Some of y'all are gonna have to get on knees and stand up there. Parents, I'm gonna clear the way so y'all can come up here and get some pictures of them. Board, you're gonna have to stand up. Everybody, Rico, you can't stand up. You're too tall, my man. Kind of squeeze together. Get, let me get some people on some knees so my board can be seen. Oh, there we go. I'll take one, guys. Alright, I can get the board. It was him? Thank you. Okay, okay, okay. Jordan, just take the car. Take the car and hit it. It's got 10 degrees cooler, just like that. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. I, it'd be something for the competition. I, I don't know. They'll put, the competitions usually give them some kind of design they have to work off of. Yeah. Uh, I like those fire pits that they show. Those are sharp. Those are sharp. Those are sharp. They can, yes, they can because they've got stools that they already, have y'all seen the stools they make? Uh, they made me a Florida State one. They got tech ones. Your boss does. No, nobody. Y'all don't have to stay in that, guys. Y'all are good. Thank you. Rico, see you. So, and I may talk about, like, what I'm trying to do, and I'm talking to the Chamber of Commerce is I want a, one of these empty buildings on the squares to turn into a Lamisa ISD store where all of our CTE stuff is. And so people know, it could be the welding, the construction, anything that we make, we can put there. Man it, run it like a business and learn that and people can come. That, that's what I'm trying, trying to do. Yeah. Well, there's so many buildings that are just empty and like what a cool deal to even teach them how to run their own business. That's what, that's what I'm trying to push for. Yeah. What's Coach McColl's name? Rosemary. Not all the kids are, but Rosemary's is. Someday, yeah. I'll tell you. Take the car, Jordan.
Make a motion to have President Bennett.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Now, what is the financial report?
Alright, um, I'm doing the financial report for Ms. McBee tonight. His grandson was playing football in Auburn, I think. And I did not want anyone to miss that. Um, so I'm gonna just go through it much like he does and try to answer questions as we go. And I'm going in the order you have it. If, if you don't have it, I'll kind of talk you through it. On the front page, the, the most important number for me is I always look, if you look at the very bottom and start on the left and count one, two, three, four, the fifth column where it says 7.82. That's the percent of the budget that we spent and that's the number we want to be at. Because that puts us on track to finish the year after this first month. Uh, and you can look above that and some of them are below it, some of them are above it, but the average is what we needed to average. And that's no different than your own budget. If you spend a little more at the grocery store, then you gotta spend a little less evening out. I mean, that's just the, the way it works. Um, if you go on to the next page, it's pretty normal. It's just numbers. Uh, the 2,000,281,346 comes from the summary of finance. So that's money that we drew down. On page three, there is something I want you to look at. If you will look and, uh, it says Apple Inc. and over to the far right, 329, 930, 49. We actually are getting that back. So when we traded in all the old Apple stuff for the new Apple stuff, that's how much we were over. So we traded in enough that we're getting that back. So honestly, the first year of the lease actually is free. We actually got that plus fi- a little over $5,000. And we thought we would, uh, that's why we did it, because we were pretty much told we have enough stuff that the first year of this lease will be covered by the trade-in. And it, and it worked out. Worked out in our favor, plus I think it's 5,600 and, $5,652 over what we traded in. So that number will wash out. Um, page four, not a lot to look at. Page five, check registry. I know last night, and he said that he never knew. I actually go through this before every board meeting, so I kind of know what everything is. And what I do, y'all know I compare utilities. The biggest number I compare is the very last one. And I'm not skipping to the last page, but the biggest one I compare is the last one. And I compare it to last October and the October before that and the October before that to see how we're tracking. Uh, we spent total check registry this year was 794,327. Last year, it was a little over a million, which was less than it was the year before that. So the trend is that we're spending less and less and less. But if you do go back to the start of the check registry, first month of the school year, you have a lot of one-time purchases. If you look through there, you'll see a lot of the programs and curriculums that we use and we buy them at the beginning of the year. Uh, and that's not all that you see. Another big number on that first page, you see the Open Gate concealed weapons. That was grant money. The Dawson County appraisal is on there. Um, but as I go through there, I see, uh, the Apple stuff. I see Smart Tag, which is the bus software that we use to make sure kids get off at the right stuff, right stops. The Brightly software, which is a work order software, again, one-time success said. Uh, Mind Play, no Red Link. I mean, it's just over and over. ICEV, ClassLink, TestHound. There are so many programs. We have to use some of it for testing from the state, some of it for getting kids on and off buses, some of it for tier intervention. It all comes out in this month. And that's what most of your big ticket items on this were. Um, board book. The one y'all use, right there on that back one. Um, so that's really the gist of it. Again, my, my biggest thing is I watch that number at the front to make sure we're on track. And I'm always looking to see if we're spending less than we did last year. Because I told y'all from the ju- that's the goal, to try to spend a little bit less every single year and conserve that budget. Y'all have any questions over this stuff? Tell Ron, y'all didn't ask me any questions. He's gonna get, he's gonna get mad. We do have two donations. Um, Frankie's not here. He is, uh, at, uh, what is it? It's a community, yeah, Community and Parent Family Engagement Conference. But every year, we get, we give Thanksgiving meals from the Food Pantry. And I don't mean turkeys. I mean the whole meal. Uh, from dessert to the bread, to the turkey, to everything. And we give donations for it. Clayburns helps a lot. Uh, in this case, we got 4,500 from Premier GTB. And that is, if you ever come to the Food Pantry and help, that Thanksgiving one's the best one. Because it, they'll be lined up down the street and we just give as many as we can. We give them until we're out. And it, it's quite a hit. So we appreciate them giving that. And then rate of pumping supply continues to just keep pouring into our schools. Uh, this was a thousand dollars to North Elementary and it'll go towards, uh, some literacy in their library, things that they're trying to purchase. And then, uh, the last thing, and, and Chris came, thank you. Uh, Chris actually did his spiel last month, but we just didn't have it on a board action item. Tonight, it is on the board action item, but he said everything he needed to say. Your, your info is in the board book, but if, I'm glad you came. That way, do y'all have any more questions for, with, with him? Or do you have anything else you want to add to it, to what you said last night? You what? Well, that's why, yeah. I'm gonna give you one minute.
He's not wrong.
But you did, you said a lot last time and I just, I just wanted to make sure y'all had any questions. I, I do appreciate you coming because you didn't have to come twice.
Absolutely. No, no, that's totally alright. I'm a little nervous of why I'm sitting up here, but, uh...
I mean, the way that I always, when we talk, and we talk quite a bit, is we're just running out of people that will do this for us. And, you know, so I appreciate that. I've seen Chris do his thing this year where he got the right people in the right room and made a lot of good things happen for us. So I appreciate you.
I will mention that one of the forms that we have to get signed is changing member representative to, uh, to Mr. Ritchie. And that, it, it was Mr. McBee before, but we, we need that role. Whatever we sit, yeah. We just need some.
I do.
Yeah.
Oh, you got it.
And that really doesn't take board approval. It's just mainly board approval to approve the invoice.
Was that your paper now?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Here, yes.
And, and Mr. Ritchie, when they email you after you was on that form, we sent it in for you, uh, when they email you, just be sure that you copy them in there.
Yes, sir. And that is all I have for the financial report.
To approve this president?
All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
It's back to me.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I know that that's probably by Mr. Ritchie's design to have students up here. I will tell you that, that that exposure to them speaking in public is invaluable. Even if it's just little nuggets at a time, that's invaluable.
Thank you, Ms. Bomb.
Okay, but that little girl's baby, she's, she's gonna be. They would have the boy last.
We ever need an opinion on anything.
She's amazing. And she was, she was just like that with those 17 schools.
Really?
That's awesome.
She's.
That is great.
I met her when she was in third grade. I still owe her $5. When she was in third grade, I bet her that she could, that I bet her on star test. I said, I bet you $5 something and she got it. So I've owed her $5 ever since. I'm gonna pay her when she graduates.
With interest. With interest.
No interest. No interest. It was 0%, 0%. Okay, so superintendent report enrollment. We've, we've been hovering. We still haven't quite got to 1,500. Uh, it hurts when that one graduated, but that's a good thing from LSA. We really haven't had much change, though. 390, 299, 388 and 465 with three at the Success Academy. It's a total of 1495. Okay, so we've got a few things we've got to go through tonight and we're gonna kind of do them as quick as we can. But I'm glad we're doing this tonight because it applies to what the lady talked about last night, the ISO training. We actually have approved goals and y'all may not know we have approved goals. We talk about them and y'all have approved them every year, but I think it's gonna make way more sense tonight because it's so fresh after what you saw last night. So if Ms. Bomb, and I'll make her way up here, I'm gonna take this off and put that other one up. I'm gonna help on this first one. Guys, this is a 40-page document that I don't.
I've got it lowered down to one.
Oh, even better. Even better. Well, I'm gonna take my 40 pages off and let you roll because I've got 40.
So the first, like, 30 pages of this that aren't up there just is all the statute this is. So basically, because we get federal money.
I can pass out.
Uh, well, that's for later. That's the other. Uh, basically, because we get federal money and state comp ed money, we have to do program evaluations every year. And that includes, um, a needs assessment. Um, we look at our DIP goals, which is our district improvement plan. And then we get input from everybody and either carry on our goals, change the goals or add new strategies. So we gathered information. Our campuses and staff did it at the end of the year. And we had a couple of meetings this summer where everybody came up here. We had people from the community, different things. But the biggest place we get a lot of our information from is that end-of-year survey that goes to students, staff, parents and community members. And so basically in that, it's like we get this much money from the federal government. What do you think we should do with it? What are your suggestions on it? How should we use it? And that's what we put into our application for our title funds. So the first 20 something pages, like I said, are all over statute. It talks about, um, it's technically your evaluation, but it's like, okay, you have to have a parent family engagement plan. Where is it? And we just put the link in. So it's, there's really nothing to it other than yes, we do it. Or no, because at the size of our school, we don't have to do it, but you have to address every area. So that's all of that. Um, but the, where it starts, go to page 22 rather. So state comp ed, we get a little over a million dollars in that every year from the state. And that is specifically for our students that are at risk. Um, a student is considered at risk, there's like 13 criteria the state sets forward. Every year, our counselors go in, they will, you know, do an entry for any kid that meets that. At the end, if they've exited, they take them out. And so that's what determines our money. But we track how our at-risk kids are doing. So this is the last two years. And what you'll notice, it's on star scores, but the passing at approaches is not what they look at for that. It has to be passing at needs. And so what we're trying to do every year is close the gap between our students that are considered at risk and all of our students that are not. So just the whole student body. So just the whole student body. Right now, we're at about fifty-eight percent students at risk. We hover about fifty-seven, fifty-eight. A lot of people confuse it with our economically disadvantaged. That is not one of the criteria.
Eighty, well, okay, so we're economically disadvantaged eighty-two percent, but our at-risk is fifty-eight percent.
That's not necessarily one of the criteria, which, which a lot of people, I always thought it was. So we look also, but our at, our graduation rate, we're, you know, it's the same, which we're at a hundred percent, have been for two years, so that's good. Any questions on that slide right there? This is the money that we get. So we turn in our, what's called our ESA consolidated application, which is for our title, our title monies. We do Title One, Title Two, and Title Four. You'll notice we don't have a Title One Part C. We have not had migrant students in the last few years, so it's not generating any money. And then our Title Three, we'll talk about again when we look at our ESL overview in a few minutes. Because of the amount of money we get, we have an SSA with the Service Center, so it just goes to them and they do everything with it. But we get a little over seven hundred thousand for Title One, ninety-seven thousand for Title Three, and then about fifty-one, almost fifty-two for Title Four. What we have done the last two years is called funding transferability, so we kind of squish them all in under Title One. So that gives us more freedom. Title One has different programmatic requirements that, because of the way we're designed, we have a little more freedom. So like under Title One, you don't have to worry about what they call supplement, not supplant. Under Title Two or Title Four, you would, which means if you could buy it or you have bought it locally, you can't use title funds. Since we're doing the trans, bleh, funding transferability, we can. So it just kind of opened it up. That was something new we started last year with the Service Center, and we have a great support system to the Service Center for all of that. And then we have our state monies and all of our other stuff. So the biggest part that you think about when you think about the district improvement plan are the goals. We have five major goals that line up with the commissioner's strategic priorities and then under.
Last night, they got trained in it last night, so this is super fresh.
So then under each goal, we have some objectives, and then under each objective, we have strategies. When we went back and looked at the input we got from everybody and looked at how we were doing on moving towards those goals, we didn't change a whole lot of them because we're still moving. Yes, we might have increased our stuff, but we still want to increase it more. The main thing we were looking at are the strategies underneath. What can we do to help us get there? So like under the first one, goal number one has to do with our aligned curriculum and instructional framework. So that's where our student achievement, our star scores.
Our grade reading and math, which they talked about last night.
Our closing the gaps with our special education and our emergent bilinguals, that's where this comes in. Basically, if something is on our needs assessment and we have it in our district improvement plan, we can use our federal money to pay for it. If it's not something we've identified as a need, we can't. So that's where a lot of this comes from. We can go through the goals, or I don't know if y'all looked at those last night?
No, we looked at general stuff. You've seen all this before. It just may not, you may not remember it, but now that you have that training, I think it is more relevant to you tonight. You know, she said you should have three to five. We've had five of these. Don't confuse them with the superintendent goals that we have. These are the district goals that we have. And there's the star scores, there's gonna be one with safety and security.
CCMR.
CCMR, which I'm gonna talk a little bit about later.
Parent and family engagement. And then staff retainment and recruitment and stuff like that. So what we did this year is went in and added a lot of the, the main thing you'll see difference, we added a lot of our new programs. The stuff about PTEC, bringing in Avid, doing things like that. Those are the main additions that we have in here because we are using some federal funds to help with that.
Can I say something on Avid? And I didn't want to interrupt those kids, but earlier today, this is something that really stood out to me. We're making every eighth grader take Avid, every eighth grader. And those kids, the young lady on the farthest left talked about taking notes, and she said that last year, not a lot of people took it. She pointed out something to those other seventeen schools today. She said, it's easy now because if there was only fifteen or twenty of us taking Avid, we might be embarrassed to be taking notes and keeping reminders. But since every eighth grader is in class, every eighth grader has to do it. It takes away, and that matters. It takes, she said, we all have to take notes, we all have to have a binder, so everybody's doing it. And I think that's a, that's a big deal that I really didn't think about when we made every eighth grader do it.
And the last thing on there at the end of the goals is a summary of our needs assessment and our statements of strengths and needs. It's, it's a lot of pages down.
Yeah, I'm just.
Just going slowly so you can look. Basically, this is a cycle we do every year. You collect your information from your needs assessment, you look at your program, you do your evaluation, you write new goals. At the end of the year, we start over with another needs assessment. Because of the amount that we get, sometimes on some things, you don't have to do it every year, but we do because we do get, I mean, I think it's a pretty good chunk of money. And then because we're technically one district, we don't have to have separate campus improvement plans, but there are requirements that are in a campus, and so we just have to make sure that those are included in our district improvement plans. So that's pretty much all we've got for the.
Questions? I will, I've got copies that I'm going to email y'all so y'all can really pull over all the goals and it'll come in your, in your Sunday update, it'll be attached.
And then once it's approved, it'll be posted on our website. That way anybody can look at it. And then anytime we request federal funds or anything, we attach what our goals are with it.
And it will be on the approval for tonight. Do y'all have any questions over that? She has something else she's got to talk about, so she can't say that right now.
And I will go just as fast for this one.
I'll pass out.
Okay, so this is something we do every year about this time. It's the ESL overview, which is about English as a second language program. And it's what our emergent bilinguals go through. So I'm only giving you the last page of it because just like with the other one, the first ten pages of this are your statute and what we do. So I pulled out some highlights. For this school year, we have seventy-nine students that are identified as emergent bilingual. We have twenty-one at high school, seventeen at middle school, fifteen at North, and twenty-six at South. Last year, we had closer to ninety-five. We exited quite a bit. We had some move, but South, we've seen a big pickup in emergent bilingual students coming in. We have, we have quite a few in pre-K this year and we haven't had that in a while. Because we have less than ten thousand dollars that we receive from the state, that's why we do this shared service agreement with the Service Center, so all of our money goes to them and then they handle our purchasing. We do our requests through them and they'll get it. So things that are above and beyond what we would normally provide, we're looking at some translation earbuds, some things like that to help with our kids. We go through them and they'll purchase it for us. The design of the program we have, we do not have a dual-language program. We don't have enough students to qualify or require that. We have the English as a second language program. And what that is, it's a pull-out. On every campus, we have a designated teacher that teaches it. They pull out, like at middle school and high school, it's one of their classes during the day on their schedule. And at North and at South, they pull out during their RTI. So at high school, Ms. Luallen teaches it. And at middle school, Coach Garcia. At North, Nora Costa. And at South, Concepcion Menuelos. Nora and Concepcion have been doing it for years, and so we saw one of our biggest growths with our upper elementary, which is what you typically see. And so we were working with her today on some things. One of the things that we really use and utilize is Summit K-12. That's our TellPass prep program. The TellPass test is what all emergent bilingual students have to take at the end of the year. Whether their parents want them in the program or not, they have to test and we have to turn in stuff on it. So if they do a parent denial, we really try to explain what's going on and that it's not anything bad, you know, we're just helping them with that language acquisition. And it goes over listening, speaking, reading, and writing. The exit criteria for that has changed, so we look for that to really, our numbers to go up. Last year, we reclassified twelve students. But in the past, to be able to be reclassified, you had to do well on TellPass, but on your STAR, you have to pass with absolutely no accommodations. They have changed that, so they understand, you know, they might need some accommodations for different reasons. So even if they use accommodations, if they pass now and their TellPass scores are good, they can go ahead and reclassify.
That's what I will do.
I will say that looking, okay, and I'll go with a little piece of paper that y'all have. So the last two pages, and that's kind of what this is, so there's our TellPass scores from last year. They used to, they've changed the way they score TellPass about every year for the last three years. We're hoping it's going back this year to their composite score, which looks at all four domains. It was supposed to have last year, the state changed their mind, and so we're hoping they stick with it this year and do what they say. We really focus on those kids that are falling in that beginner range because one of the things the state looks at is if you've been in our school system for, you know, more than two years and you're still at a beginner, why, what are we doing? So we look for them to progress through that. You'll see at the bottom, that's how our emergent bilingual students are doing in relation to our entire student body in each area of STAR. One of the things that we're pretty pumped about is our students that have reclassified in RLA maintain their, you know, passing rate on STAR. We had a hundred percent of those in their first and second year after exiting, passed with approaches, and eighty-nine percent passed at meet. So it's just higher than our general population. You'll notice on social studies, there are no scores on that last column, and that's because there's some years you don't have anybody that falls into that category. On the back of the page are some recommendations. So after we look at everything, we talk to especially the ESL teachers, and we look at everything, we make some recommendations for what we want to do. One of them is to continue the Summit K-12 program. We're really focusing on that speaking domain. Our kids don't like to do that. So you sit in front of the computer, you have to record yourself, everybody else is in the room. If you don't like it, you hit delete, your time starts again, and our kids end up losing it. And so the TellPass program, prep program that we use Summit K-12 is exactly like the TellPass. So what we've seen is the more they've practiced it, the better they're getting, and we're getting a more accurate read. We're continuing to look to get more teachers ESL certified. To be truly ESL certified to teach the program, you have to pass the ESL certification test, but you also have to have a reading or generalist original certificate. So we do have some that are like math teachers that have their ESL, but they can't teach the pull-out program because it has to be language. We work on our LPAT meetings. Ms. Arismades is helping with that this year, and then we're gonna continue looking at our data, making sure that as we're watching those kids that are getting close, we're doing everything we can to help push them to reclassification and making sure we meet all our timelines.
Questions over that? It's a lot. Ms. Bombin, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so moving on with my stuff, guys, and I'm gonna, I kind of altered this slideshow because I think it's really important that you guys can speak on this. I know I talk about the legislative stuff all the time. I tried to put it in a way tonight because it's coming and it's an important one, and we've got to be able to talk about it. And y'all can say things I cannot. And so I really wanted to, I think, I feel like y'all ought to be as educated as any board because we talk about it all the time. But I tried to really put this together so it'll make a lot of sense. So here's, if this was a football game, here's our opponents, right? Governor Abbott and Governor Patrick. Now, I'm not talking about Republican, Democrat, I'm talking about strictly with school finance. That's all I'm living in here. Those are our voucher supporters that don't want to give monies to public schools, okay? We're stuck with them till 2027. Speaker Phelan is on our side, all right? Now, the problem with that is his term runs through January fourteenth of 2025. Well, guess when the next legislative session starts? Right after. Right? And so obviously, Abbott and Patrick have a guy that's gonna run against him that they're hoping will be the speaker. But if he wins, then there's a guy that's on our team that's one of the main players of what's gonna happen in the eighty-ninth legislative session. All right, so, and if you'll remember last year, I also told you, so Senate class, there's two new members, but we're never gonna get the Senate, right? The Senate is full-blown, the Dallas Cowboys, they're never gonna be good guys, right? The House is who's been on public education's side, but we barely won it last year because fourteen Republicans voted against the rest of the Republicans and voted against vouchers. And if you remember, I told you Governor Abbott's goal was to get them out, and he did. And he got a lot of other ones out, too. There's thirty-one new members in the House. So a lot of people started leaving all the committees. Nine committee chairs are not returning, nine committee vice chairs are not returning, and then the House Public Education Committee, two members are not returning. And then the House Appropriations Committee, which that's who's appropriates their funds, eight members are not returning. So Abbott accomplished what he wanted to accomplish. It's a full-blown turnover of all of the people that opposed him, all right? So what are the takeaways? All right, so how many of y'all voted? It's not my business how you voted, but if you voted, and I told them after I voted, if you read the proposition on vouchers, it was not truth, right? And that is something that, it's well-known, truth has been a casualty of this. I want to say it was worded in the sense of if you, I can't remember, but it, it, it still leaned on the, trying to convince those parents that they were gonna get to choose the school their kid went to and their funding would follow. It was, it was based in a way that if you weren't listening, you're obviously gonna check, yes. So truth has been a casualty. And the other part, and I told y'all, there were over twenty superintendents like me that were sued by the state of Texas because when they talked about it, they didn't do so the politically correct way. And that's when I say y'all can say things I cannot, I cannot tell people. I can just educate people. And that's what I tried to do. All right, so that's what they're gonna talk about. School finance is gonna be A number one, all right? Accountability and assessment is gonna be number two. Property tax reform will be number three, and then they will continue to talk about school safety and student security. Last time, they stayed in the physical world, the gates, the vestibules, the metal detectors. Virtual has come into play, all right? Cyberbullying has become a much bigger deal, even to TEA. Now, y'all remember me last year talking about there was a thirty-two billion dollar surplus? They took five billion of it and said, that's going to public education. But then when vouchers didn't pass, they said, oh, you're not gonna get that five billion. So there's five billion still sitting there that was allotted that they just never gave us. Five billion, all right? This time, they're still gonna have a surplus, but the surplus is gonna be low, but it's still gonna be about twenty-three billion dollars surplus that they have to spend. That includes the five, right? So there's five billion dollars that have already been appropriated to us that they just didn't give us because they didn't get their vouchers. There are also, the second one, they're gonna continue to look at star testing and decide if that's the way that they want to move forward because I've talked to you a lot about the lawsuits that are still going. All right, they're gonna continue to look at curriculum management and instructional materials. Now, if you have a spouse that teaches in our district, I met with all of, all of our staff independently and talked to them because, and yet, we've talked to some of y'all individuals about curriculum. Well, they don't like the curriculum. They don't like the curriculum. And my answer is, well, they didn't like the last one, and they're not gonna like the next one, right? They gotta like something. But I told our teachers, the liking curriculum is about to go away because I will promise you, within the next three years, it's not gonna be a choice anyway. The state's gonna tell everybody exactly what to teach in math, they're gonna tell everybody exactly what to teach in reading and history and science. And I think we're ahead of the game because I think a lot of the stuff we're using is what they're gonna pick, and that's why we have been picking it. And so I'm telling teachers, man, quit complaining about it and let's just figure out how to teach it because if it's coming anyway, let's get good at it. School-to-work pipeline, y'all spent a whole night listening to CTE, right? That's TEA's focus, is getting our kids ready for the real world. And all this stuff that I've been bringing to y'all, the PTECs, when y'all heard Ms. Baker say how many certificates that we gave this year, y'all gotta understand, that's up from zero, right? The year before that, it was zero, and now we're at sixty. But if you'll listen to me, my goal is for every kid that graduates to have a certificate. Two reasons for that. Two, two reasons for that. One is the kid. Obviously, if a kid walks off our state with a high school diploma and a certificate, welding certificate, cosmetologist certificate, they've got a better chance of being successful. But the other thing is the amount of funding that we have left on the table in La Mesa ISD. Ballman was in the room with me the other day because we had someone come meet with us. Guys, we got zero last year for our CCMR bonuses, zero. Right, next year, because we did have some certificates. Remember, I always say this, it lags a year behind. Right, the money we get this year is for last year and so on. It actually lags two years behind. If it goes the way that we think it's going to go, it will go from zero to around $300,000 to $400,000 for 30 people. All right, now, what's it going to be if all 104 of our kids get CCMR certified? Now, we're putting close to $1 million back in the La Mesa ISD part. That's why, because it equips the kids and it also takes care of the district. That's why I keep pushing the P-Tech. All right, impacted social media on cell phones. We're a year away, probably this year, from there being a statewide ban on cell phones. Other states have already done it. They've studied the, the effect on, on education in the classroom. But more than that, it's the social impact it has on students when they're all at school with cell phones. So right now, it's still up to the schools to what they do. And everybody has the, I don't remember what we call it, hatties? Or like the thing I showed you all, the yonder packs? But they told us that there's very good chance they walk out this year with a statewide ban on, in all schools because of the negative effect that they are starting to prove that they have. I'm not going to get into artificial intelligence because it's still too much for me. I, I, I still don't understand it. I think it's going to take over the world. I've seen Terminator 2, think it's scary, but I don't know much else about it. And then pre-K through three, math and reading outcomes. So these are all things the legislative people are going to be looking at. And then I keep telling everybody, everybody says, well, La Mesa has a lot of uncertified teachers. Guys, it is a statewide problem. Uncertified teachers are everywhere. All right, and this is the end thing I want to say because we've got to educate people on what vouchers really are. Because it's not a school choice. I don't know, how many times I've said it, it's not parent choice. Parents don't get to pick, the schools get to pick. But if somebody says to you, and I've been thinking, what's the easiest way to describe it? And I saw this the other day and I was like, that's it. So this is what a voucher is. Rob, man, you're a golfer, right? I want to learn to play golf and the public course gives free golf lessons. Right, that's public schools. We educate everybody for free. But I want a more exclusive experience, so I want to go to the country club. Right, I want to go to private schools. So you've got the public course, you've got the private course. And here's where vouchers come in. But I want the public course to pay for my membership. That's vouchers. Right, and I think that's the easiest way to explain it to people that don't quite understand it. If they'll let you in. So a study was done on the states that have done it. 80% of kids that end up with vouchers were already in private schools. 75% of the private schools raised the tuition the extent that the state approves the vouchers. That's what's going to happen. All right. Last one, don't assume all choices are for attendance. Y'all heard me say, I don't think it's going to affect La Mesa. I'm starting to step back from that. I don't think it's going to affect us because we don't have private schools. But what they're starting to say is what TEA is going to push and what the commissioner is going to push for pop-up schools. For, for people to just start having homeschooling in their garage so that they can get the voucher money from the people. That is scary because that could happen anywhere. So what do we do? We determine why people would ever use a voucher. And we start to play on our advantages, which again, goes to everything I'm talking about. All this CTE stuff, private schools can't offer that. Specialized and advanced programs and facilities. We've got things private schools can't offer. Extracurricular activities. Right, you always think of sports and band, but guys, there's so many other things. Skills, BPA, all this stuff tonight, private schools don't offer that. So we got to make sure that we advertise that. All right, so we talk about not having all certified teachers. I could have told you a month ago exactly how many we have. My brain's been elsewhere. But did you know, private schools, you don't have to be certified at all? So whereas we may have 50% uncertified, private schools have 100% uncertified. So you can't tell me that the education is, in a private school is better. And then we got to talk about transportation because private schools will not transport their kids. And we just have to really advertise what we do that private schools don't do. Because they're coming, and I believe that. Y'all have heard me say, vouchers are coming. So we got to start playing the defense and making sure people want to come to La Mesa ISD. But this was interesting, and this is the last thing I got. So first off, they can't do anything in the first 60 days unless it becomes an emergency item. And there's word that Abbott may put it as an emergency item, which means he can pass it in the first 60 days. But there's a lot of private schools that don't want it. Which that kind of surprised me because I keep thinking they're on board with this. But evidently, there's a lot of private schools that don't like what Abbott is trying to do either. But I just don't think that matters. All right, so legislative update, do y'all have any questions? Do y'all feel, have y'all heard it or not, that you think if somebody came and said, hey, tell us about it, you could kind of talk about it a little?
You think if they banned the cell phones, you think it would, I mean, would it just be public schools? Or would it be a state law for private schools too?
No, I think it would be, I think private schools will be exempt from anything that they make us do. Accountability.
It's kind of like charter schools. Charter schools don't have to play by the same rules.
And that's the, and y'all have heard me say, if we're going to give them the money, they got to play by the same rules. That's the thing. If you want to give them the money, give them the money. But make them play by the same rules as everybody else. Because it affects how much money you get. All right. Okay, so the last few things I have, and this one is, so we're really putting a lot of pressure on our teachers to be better tier-one instructors, right? And this is not long. I know y'all are tired, but this was important to me because we have really been working on how can we get our teachers better? We have five things for teachers, right? We ask them, one, to prepare, lesson plans, right? We call them eternalizing the lesson now, so you know what you're doing. Two, have a plan and then go teach the plan. Three, grade the plan. Four, if they didn't get it, figure out a way to teach it again. And then five, talk to the parents because it's a team, it's not universal. That's it, that's what we ask the teachers. And it is hard, but we've all done it, right? Where we have a lot of teachers, and I say we, public education, they're struggling with classroom management. So you don't ever even get to the content because kids are harder. They are harder now than they have ever been. And I'll be honest, they're harder because a lot of parents won't, they don't want their kids to be taught. They want them to just be able to do whatever they want to do. And so even getting the management side down is what's really been tough for a lot of first-year young teachers. So we, we, we give them strategies, we give them ideas. But we had a conversation, and I don't, I was having with Tipton prior to the fall break. And he, he's just got some that are struggling. And then him being a secondary guy, he didn't really know how to help them. So what I did over our fall break is I signed up for a two-week course in how to teach what's called PACTs. Now, PACTs is basically classroom management skills from secondary to high school. And I, I got trained in how to train. And so I'm starting with my first one. I've told, what was the date? The Sabbath, I've told Tipton to pick his three most struggling teachers and then go come over here and I'm going to train them all day long. I actually can train anybody in the nation now. So anybody that wants to be trained, I'll train. But What's that? No, I don't have time for it, but that's, I stayed up, because I think it's important. We, one of the teachers told me, I just need someone that can show me how. And if we, that's our job. We got to support our people. And that's, that, that was the point of doing it, to find a way that I can help support. And so Ballman's got the content. I'm going to try to help him wrangle these kids and help with that classroom management. So I'm excited about it. I'm training a group from Australia next week. By the way, okay, last thing that I have. A year ago, I talked to y'all about a thing called Dial Care. Here's the other thing that I think are, I think there's a mental health problem. Y'all have heard me talk about, I think our kids are struggling with mental health. That Dial Care was okay, but it was $15,000 and it was only for kids 12 and up. Right, we have a lot of counselors that do a good job. But I'm telling y'all, Sweetwater High School, the counselor was Brian Allen's, who was my best friend's mom. And it didn't matter how much problems I had, I wasn't going to talk to her. Because I wasn't going to let her tell my mom that I was struggling. So I've been looking for a way for kids to have someplace to reach out to. Kids that might not have the home life that they want someone to reach out to. Kids getting bullied, teen moms. Parents, this, this works for parents. Teachers that are struggling, sometimes they just need someone to talk to. Sometimes that needs to be someone that I don't see in the hallway anymore. So I want y'all to watch this little video because I found this program last week.
As of middle and high school, we're challenging enough already. During the pandemic, more than one in three high school students experienced poor mental health. And nearly half felt persistently sad or hopeless. Even worse, 20% of teens reported having seriously considered suicide, with 9% having attempted it. Our schools are doing their best, but with staffing shortages on top of a surging crisis, we need a lifeline. Reach Out is Gaggle's new 24/7 mental health crisis line for schools. It's designed for in-the-moment supportive students to prevent difficult situations from getting worse. Teens can communicate with a crisis counselor in whatever way they are most comfortable. Via SMS text, web-based chat or voice calls. All powered by Amazon Web Services. Imagine a world where Stacy, who is on the brink of running away from home, can open a 24-hour chat window and talk with a trained crisis counselor. One who is familiar with her school district and the resources available to her. Or where Derek, a victim of repeated bullying, can find solace and professional support in the form of text messages with a mental health counselor. Where Karina, an ESL student from Guatemala, can leverage instant translation into one of dozens of languages to overcome the language barrier between her and a crisis counselor. And where Sarah, a dedicated school counselor, can depend on Reach Out to be there for her students, even on the weekends and late at night. The next day, Sarah will learn which students are struggling and need a deeper level of in-person support. Reach Out can fill the gaps in our school's mental health resources. The need is there, the technology is ready. Join us in helping improve the mental health of every student. Reach Out, visit www.reachout.gaggle.net to learn more.
So where this is different, and you heard it, they work with your school system. They know the resources you have, they know the police department, the counselors. And if April calls at midnight and she's suicidal, it doesn't end there. They are able to get a report to the right people the next day.
That's one of the, I said last year, the convention.
That's where I found Ms. Gonzalez, was at the gas station. When I called them and they said, here's the other part. Let's say you've got a parent whose kid just came home and said they're pregnant. And that parent doesn't know how to deal with it, they could call. I, what do y'all think? It is cheap, it's too, we can get every kid, every parent, every teacher in our district hooked up for $3,000 a year where they can call any time.
Yes, that is awesome. Yes.
Last bit, if you're available Saturday, our band's marching at 4:15. They've worked their tail off. I'll be there. And then, I want to read this, this is the last thing I have. I got this email today and I started to forward it to y'all, but I was like, no, I want to make sure y'all read it. This came from the Assistant Athletic Director of the UIL, who didn't have to send it. Coach Ramos, he doesn't know I have it, he sent it to me. "I just wanted to express a heartfelt thanks for the exceptional way you handle your duties as a leader, your commitment to ensuring a great experience for everyone involved truly stands out. We were particularly impressed when one of your officials took the time to recognize our efforts, highlighting your assistant coaches and athletes' actions. It speaks volumes about your dedication to setting such a positive example for the entire program. Thank you for all you do." So that was from the Assistant Athletic Director of the UIL. So the report came from an official in our varsity game against River Row. And at the bottom, it says, "This isn't as much a good sportsmanship as a note so that Coach Ramos and this staff and this school can be recognized for running a top-notch program. I've been to La Mesa to officiate several games at different levels and this was by far the best experience. His assistants ensured we were all taken care of upon arrival. The dressing room was fantastic and even displayed a clock synced with the game clock on the field. And here's the best part, his players were respectful on the field, even in the heat of the moment, and maintained their composure. We could tell a huge difference in the attitude of the players from previous trips." Guys, people don't take time to send that, and that matters. That matters as much as anything. So I wanted to read that out loud to y'all. Next board meeting is Monday, November 21st. I talked to Ms. Gonzalez, I'm going to look at, seeing if y'all are okay with moving that December one from a Thursday to earlier in the week, like we did a year ago. But we can make that decision later on in the deal. Guys, y'all heard a lot tonight, do you have any questions for me? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Now we go to board action items. The first one is deliberation and possible action to approve the district approval plan for 2024, 2025.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Deliberation and possible action to approve the P-111 casualty insurance for $754,335.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Now we go to the executive section, consider and discuss personnel types of the code, government code section, number 1.07.
Y'all don't, stick around.
I've never been so engaged and caring about his work. He's so loyal and he's looking at everything.
So Sammy Joe Cuthbert, he bears from love and cheer. I've got her in the future.
Do you tell her this book? I did.
I did, it was that, back to the, I don't know if it's the same one.